Good evening and welcome to this, the March 13th meeting of the Livermore City Council. I now call the meeting to order. The roll call show that all of the members of the council are present and accounted for, with the exception of Councilmember Bob Carling, who is excused. Tonight, we have a special treat for our Pledge of Allegiance and Flag Ceremony we have tonight from Troop 317-333. Okay, heavens, we've got five different troops here. So I'll just announce the names. So we have Maya Lovely Hackett, Caitlin Zurhoff, Aurelia Correa, Shannon Thomas, Mackenzie Salamida, Charlotte Plemons, and Jessica Plemons will be here with the flag ceremony. And then we'll have a proclamation which will be received by Maya and Caitlin. So with that, I would ask that the Girl Scouts please come forward for the Pledge of Allegiance, and asks the community to rise if you have your time. So please.
Girl Scouts, attention. Color guard, advance. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, visible with the routine justice for all.
Please join me in the Girl Scout promise. On my honor, I will try to steer God and my country, help people at all times, and be delivered by the Girl Scout law. Color guard, dismiss. Please be seated.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you for that. And we have a proclamation recognizing March 12th through the 18th as Girl Scout Week. Whereas on March 12th, 1912, Girl Scouts of the USA was founded in Savannah, Georgia, by Juliet Gordon Lowe with the goal of bringing girls out of isolated home environments and into community service in the open air. And whereas through their 105-year history, Girl Scouts have helped build millions of girls' courage, confidence, and character through leadership development, taking action, and connecting with their communities. In Girl Scouts, girls discover the fun, friendship, and power of girls uniting together to make the world a better place. And whereas, as part of the Girl Scouts of Northern California, the Cresta Blanca Service Unit in Livermore serves close to 700 girls in 71 troops, from kindergarten through high school. And whereas the Girl Scout organization has succeeded through the dedication, time, and talent of volunteers of different backgrounds and areas of expertise, now therefore, the City Council of the City of Livermore hereby proclaims March 12th through 18th, 2017, as Girl Scout Week, and recognizes the contributions of the Girl Scouts to the Livermore community. And with this, young ladies, I will present this to you.
I ate an entire box of tagalongs the last time.
And those of you that may have noticed when I stood up, my Einstein tie. Tomorrow is Albert Einstein's birthday, so certainly have to recognize that.
We forgot Bob.
Oh, well, I thought you grabbed one on the way by there. All right. Not yourself. We'll fight over the rest of them after. You've got one first shot, and then we'll battle the rest of them. Okay, and then we also have a proclamation for March as American Red Cross Month. Gregory Portillo here? Mr. Portillo, okay. And this is a proclamation from the City of Livermore proclaiming American Red Cross Month for March 2017. And whereas, the American Red Cross is a volunteer agency chartered and authorized by Congress to act in times of need and to provide compassionate assistance to people afflicted by personal, local, or national disasters. And whereas since its inception in 1898, the American Red Cross Bay Area Chapter has touched many lives in the local community. American Red Cross heroes in Livermore work tirelessly to help in times of disasters, give life-saving blood, provide support to members of the military and their families, teach safety preparedness classes, and donate their time, money, and services. And whereas in the past year, the 3,800 volunteers in the American Red Cross Bay Area Chapter helped 1,757 families with temporary housing, clothing, food, and mental health counseling during 681 local disasters. In addition, these local volunteers trained more than 83,000 people in life-saving CPR, first aid, and water safety education. How many people in the room have used CPR? Yeah. When you need it, you need it. And the Red Cross has been very instrumental in providing those skills to many of us. Whereas, Red Cross blood services support Bay Area hospitals, providing them with nearly 35,000 units of red cells, platelets, and plasma to patients in need. And Red Cross staff deploy with the U.S. military to provide emergency communications, counseling, financial assistance, and a caring presence to nearly 7,000 local military families. And whereas this month is dedicated to all who support the American Red Cross mission to prevent and alleviate human suffering in the face of emergencies, now therefore, the City Council of the City of Livermore proclaims March 2017 as American Red Cross Month, and thanks to those residents who volunteer their time, give blood, and donate money and time to make a difference in the lives of others. So, Mr. Portillo?
Thank you very much. I have a series of data to share with you, but I won't since I see it's a packed house very quickly.
You're speaking into the microphone. It'll be on camera.
Okay, I'm honored to accept this on behalf of the American Red Cross, from the City of Livermore announcing this as Red Cross Month. We continue to, as Mr. Marchand had pointed out, working with the City of Livermore residents and leadership to continue our very worthwhile collaboration. Thank you.
Okay. With that, we're going to move on to the Citizens Forum. Oh, you know what? I got ahead of myself. Back to the closed session, to the city attorney, was there any reportable action out of closed session?
No, Mr. Mayor, there was not.
Okay, great. Thank you. Great minds think alike there. I got your message. Okay, moving on to the Citizens Forum. These are for items that are not on the agenda. The City Council can either take action or deliberate on anything, but we also ask that you keep your comments to three minutes or less. I have about a half a dozen cards here. Okay. Dale K., David Rounds, and Scott Kennison. Okay, is that Dale K.? Oh, there she is?
Way back here.
Okay, Dale K., David Rounds, and Scott Kennison.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of City Council. I was not at the council meeting last time, and wanted to thank you so much for including Innovation Tri Valley, who I represent, for the Livermore Downtown Steering Committee. I was looking through my files this afternoon, and I found many, many letters supporting a downtown hotel from a long time ago, and a flood of them more recently. I think the kind of hotel, and we just wanted to say that this, that Presidio is proposing is the one that regional and local businesspeople, winegrowers, and citizens have been advocating for a very long time. I am stressing "long time" simply because many of us fear that yet another drawn-out process could endanger our ability to keep this wonderful development. So we know the time for the market is excellent right now, but it's fragile, and it could be not so excellent in a very short period of time. And we could lose an amazing opportunity. So we urge you to find a way, if you can. I know this is a process that you have to go through, and I think, we already think you went through an excellent process to start out with. This is another process that it's very good to have citizens input, but we would like, we would hope that you could find a way to make this process short, and always look at our downtown as something that is not exclusive but inclusive. We know that you're committed to building in the heart of your very beautiful city, a plan that will serve everyone, not any one group, but you are committed, and we are committed, to supporting that process in any way we can. So thank you again for including us.
Thank you, Ms. K. Thank you for your comments. David Rounds, Scott Kennison, Dave Wetmore. Mr. Rounds.
Thank you, Council and staff. I just lost my picture here. All right. So I missed last meeting, and I just wanted to commend you all for moving forward quickly to address the development issues in downtown. Creating a task force of shareholders is a great first step forward toward getting the community input that was late in coming last time. Expanding the Steering Committee at the last meeting so it represented a more diverse group was good leadership on your part. The next step is going to require the same level of leadership. I believe we all struggle with the, with some fundamental issues here. How do we move forward quickly without rushing the process, but keeping the momentum and keeping the public in general satisfied that you are following up with their mandate from last year's election? And maybe most importantly, keeping the one hotel developer on the hook. I understand the desire to focus on the hotel, parking, and traffic first, and I generally agree with the big proviso that these issues are discussed in the context of the bigger picture. What will the eight acres look like when everything is developed? Any discussion of the hotel and parking really cannot happen without consideration, considering the synergy that has to exist with the remainder of the development. Deciding on the hotel size and location cannot be done piecemeal without having some general sense of what kind of open space you will be working with, what kind of housing or live-work space is going to be considered, will there be conference space, where will that be located, et cetera. Not taking these issues into consideration could seriously limit and box in the total development. It is also pretty clear that the hotel and parking are critical, and apparently something that everyone believes in, believes will happen no matter what kind of input we get from the public. With that in mind, it seems that the first task for the Steering Committee can still be the hotel, but it has to be in context with the most probable ideas for the entire development. How do we put this in context without putting the cart before the horse and without wasting another year? One way could be to look at what has already been submitted in response to the initial RFPs, not for its detail, but for guidance. Plus, have staff do some not-too-detailed mock-up ideas based on the significant input from last year's discussions around where to put the hotel, sorry, Mark, and the parking, and identify traffic hotspots. Finally, other organizations like the community group have done architectural concepts they tried to introduce last time, but they'd missed the deadline. Using all of this input can give the stakeholders in the Steering Committee some spatial framework within which they can prepare for a community discussion on the hotel and parking. In an ideal world, we would start from scratch and see what bubbles up from the community for the entire development, but because of timing and because the parking is so critical, things are not ideal. And as a result, at least this part of the development has to be led a bit by the council. If Presidio was not the only hotel developer, it would be a different story. And while the city did extend their exclusive rights to negotiate to keep Presidio on the hook, they will not stick around forever, and they need a decision sooner than later. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rounds. Scott Kennison, Dave Wetmore, and Jeff Caskey. Mr. Kennison.
Good evening, Mayor Marchand, Councilmembers, City Staff. My name is Scott Kennison. I'm the Executive Director of Livermore Valley Performing Arts Center and a resident of Livermore, 421 South Livermore. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. A few weeks ago, at the Chamber of Commerce's Business Alliance Meeting, David Stark from the East Bay Realtors Association gave an overview of residential real estate in Livermore. It was an insightful look at what drives real estate demand and prices in the Bay Area and specifically Livermore. A few times, he mentioned the Bankhead Theater as one of the aspects of downtown that increases the quality of life in Livermore and derives desirability and housing prices. This was not surprising to me. The arts mean business. That is a fact. Consumers of the arts spend money over and above the cost of a ticket. According to the Americans for the Arts, the average ticket buyer spends an additional $24.60 on top of the price of a ticket. Most of that goes to eating out before or after a performance, and that is a national average and is only local patrons, not people who are traveling more than 15 miles. But for argument's sake, if we use that number, the Bankhead sold 56,102 tickets last year, and that equals $1,237,576.80 to the local economy. And that is just the tickets sold. That does not include comps or free family concerts, evenings on the green, the educational events that we've been presenting monthly for the past year, or the over $70,000 that we spend just on artist housing and meals in Livermore for visiting artists. It is well documented that a vibrant arts community attracts businesses and homeowners and increases the tax revenues for the city, county, and state. I can quote numbers until I'm blue in the face, but obviously, I am biased. With the support of the members of the Livermore Cultural Arts Council, I ask the city to conduct a study on the effect of the performing arts and visual arts on the economy of the city, and look ahead at what the financial benefits could be for providing taxpayer support for the arts. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kennison. By the way, the Marriage of Figaro at the Bankhead Saturday was amazing. So, well done. Thank you.
I had nothing to do with it.
Well, I know. But, on the contrary, you're running the theater in which it was performed. Mr. Wetmore, are we talking baseball?
Mayor, thank you very much. Nice to see everybody again, City Council, City Staff. With me this evening are two of our executive committee from the Little League Intermediate World Series, Kathleen Minzer and Bill Abumrad. I wanted to come here and just give you, number one, a welcome, and a thank you for your support as always, but give you some dates for your calendars. Eleven teams will be coming, once again, the world will be coming to Livermore, starting on July the 28th of this year. The teams arrive in San Francisco on July the 28th, that's a Friday. Five international teams and six USA regional winners. On Saturday, July the 29th, we're going to have our opening ceremony this year at 4:00 PM at the Bankhead Theater. We're very glad to be coming back downtown again, as it exposes all the families to the downtown. We then play all week, and we've got some new ads this year. On Saturday, August the 5th, at 1:00 PM and 5:00 PM Pacific Time, the International and the USA Championship Games will be televised on one of the ESPN networks. On Sunday, August the 6th, at 7:00 PM Pacific Time, the World Championship World Series Game will be televised on ESPN. In the past, we just had the championship game that was televised, so we're expanding. We're very excited about it, and ESPN really likes what they see when they come to Livermore, California. People that are interested, we have a great website. You can always just Google Little League Intermediate World Series. We're always in need of volunteers during the week. We're desperate for sponsors like everybody else is in the, in the, in the world. We have to raise about $175,000 just for our little piece here. Little League Headquarters, they fly in the teams, they transport the teams, they house the teams, but once they get here, they're ours, and about 200 players, coaches, and 12 international umpires that come from around the world. Trying to think of anything else. Improvements out at the park. Every year, we try to do improvements. As we know, we want to continually upgrade that facility. We've had some meetings with both City Staff, LARPD, and the school district. It's a, it's a unique item when I go back to Williamsport, and I try to explain to them, this is our expense lines, our income lines, and we have three parties that are sort of all involved for the same goal at that, at that site. So I did want to come here, give you that date, the end of this month, we're going to do our World Series Tournament Draw, and you'll then be able to see that out on our website to see who's going to play who. And of course, you'll just have to fight amongst yourselves to see who wants to throw out the first pitch this year. And Bob's done it. I know the mayor's done it, so we're looking forward to just having you out there.
We've got another five miles an hour in the fastball this year.
So thank you very much.
Dave, Kathleen, Bob, we'll see you out there. Bill, good to see you. Thank you. Okay, Jeff Caskey and Lynn Sepulai.
Wow, following baseball. You give me a tough one. Hi, I'm Jeff Caskey. I'm the President of the Livermore Heritage Guild, Livermore's Historical Society, and I just wanted to tell you, give you a bit of an update and invitation regarding two of the projects of the Heritage Guild, our management of the city's Duarte Garage and Lincoln Highway Museum, as well as the city's historic Hagaman Ranch. If you haven't been to the Duarte Garage in a little while, I suggest you drop back in. We have been working, continuing to work to restore the original shop, and we also, of course, have some new exhibits. We've got an old pedal-powered blade grinder out there you can spin. We have some local historic bricks, as well as the original, an original Lincoln Highway marker in there. And of course, we have the restored fire engines, which are Livermore's original fire engines in there. We are open on the third Sunday from 10:00 to 2:00, and that means that one coming up is March 19th. We've also started our third year of managing the city's historic Hagaman Ranch, and it's been quite a, quite a project. Besides the oversight of the equestrian and agricultural partners on there, the Heritage Guild has undertaken a bunch of heritage preservation and restoration projects. Behind the scenes, we've been working on foundations, plumbing, electrical, roofs, et cetera. We've also supported historic projects by both Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts on the site. And of course, we participate, or the city participates with us in the city's Volunteer Day, and the city always has been great about bringing out a lot of volunteers and helping on the, working on the preservation of the site this year, each year, and we hope it'll be again this year. Last year, we started a program of open houses at the end of the month. We've been opening the site to the public. This is the Public's Historic Ranch, and we have just been delighted to be able to bring in an amazed public to show them around. We've had quilters, quillers, lace makers, wood carvers. We even had a rope making, a roping lesson going on back there, and some kids might be able to bring down a steer if they keep at it. We also, of course, have historic tours, and we tell the historic story of the site. So that's coming up, as it always does, is the last Sunday of the month, and that's from 1:00 to 4:00, and so that's coming up on March 26th. You can catch that information on our website, livermorehistory.com. And on this upcoming event, we're going to have some classic cars, perhaps a little bit newer than the, than the historic age of the site, but I think you'll have a lot of fun. We're going to celebrate St. Patrick's Day, and again, the historic tours, artists on site, and public is welcome. Thank you.
And just to give a save the date, you mentioned the Community Service Day. That's going to be April 22nd this year, so Saturday, April 22nd. Phenomenal day. Last year, we had 600 volunteers, a lot of them down at the Hagaman Farms. So mark your calendars, it'll be April 22nd, so hope to see everybody out working with the community.
And I'll give a shout-out to Jeff Schaefer for organizing that Volunteer Day. It's an amazing job, so your staff does a killer job. Thank you.
Thank you. Lynn Sepulai.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, staff, and citizens. My name is Lynn Sepulai, Livermore Cultural Arts Council President. During our March meeting, the LCAC membership overwhelmingly agreed to support Scott Kennison and us for a city study of the economic benefits of all cultural and arts programs to the city. Part of this study would look at the support for the arts by comparable cities. LCAC, known as 51st Year, is composed of reps from 30 organizations, classical music, dance, and theater, groups keeping alive Livermore's history and culture, including Hispanic and African. We work with members, including the city, schools, and Parks District, and the college. Our groups are critical to the city's vibrancy, making a welcome place to raise a family, start a business, or attract and retain workers. Through our efforts, tens of thousands are drawn to restaurants, shops, and businesses. LCAC will continue to make Livermore an even better place to live, and we hope that this study paves the way for the city and the arts to work collaboratively. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sepulai. Okay, that's it for the Citizens Forum cards that I have. We're going to move on to the Consent Calendar. There's been a request to pull item 4.02, which is an additional ordinance, so if there's no objection from the council, or do I need an affirmative on that?
You can do it yourself if you'd like to.
Okay, I'll just, in that case, if there's agreement, we can pull 4.02 for discussion at another date. Okay, we have an affirmation.
Or return to that at a future meeting.
Yes. Okay, so 4.02 is pulled, pulled for a future meeting date. Does anybody else wish to pull an item for discussion? Okay. Is there a motion to approve the Consent Calendar?
Sure, I'll move to approve 4.01 and 4.03 through 4.06.
Okay, very good. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Coumber. Any discussion of the motion? In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, objections? It passed unanimously. Moving on to public hearing, 5.01. This is a hearing to consider proposal to construct seven buildings, including six residential at Sunflower Hill on First Street. So I have Ben Murray, Fran Reisner, and Carlos San Diego as the staff members on that. Mr. Murray.
Thank you, Mayor Marchand, and Councilmembers. The project site is located on First Street, right across the street from the Safeway Gas Station, Chili's Restaurant, Lowe's, and Safeway. The site is bounded by single-family residences north of First Street and by the Safeway and Lowe's Centers across First Street. The, the site's general plan designation is urban low-medium residential, which allows a density range of two to three units per acre, which is the same designation as the surrounding neighborhood. The site has mixed zoning. The back of the property is owned PUD 49-89, which matches the neighborhood adjacent, but the majority of the property is owned open-space agriculture, which is a district that reflects the historic use of the property. The project seeks to change the general plan designation from urban-low-medium residential to urban-high-three residential, which would allow a density range of 14 to 18 units per acre. The proposed rezoning would change the site's zoning to multiple-family residential. This slide illustrates the existing topography and site boundaries. The main parcel measures 1.9 acres, and then the portion to the rear measures about 0.23 acres. Most of the site is essentially flat. It slopes gradually at about 4% grade up from First Street, but then, as you can see, the boundaries of the property are sloped. In this location, there's about a six-foot differential. of the property are sloped. In this location, there's about a six-foot differential. The site is about six feet lower than the adjacent residential property. Along the back in this location, the development site is 21 to 22 feet lower than these properties. In this location, the site is about eight feet lower than this property. And then, as you move over to this property, the site is about one foot higher than the adjacent property. The property and the home have an important part in Livermore's history. The home itself was built in 1927 by Robert Scannoni, some say Shinoni, the great-grandson of Robert Livermore. The home was originally part of a much larger farm that extended all the way out to where Las Bacitas Road is now. And that includes the property that is now Pulte Estates. Historically, the site and the surrounding land were used for grazing and farming. This historic aerial shows the property around 1940, which was the time when the residential property was split off from the rest of the agricultural land. Then over the years, the property around in this area was developed with homes. Safeway was developed across the street, and then eventually Lowe's. Despite its residential general plan designation, the site's zoning remained agricultural to reflect its use. This shows the property in its current condition. The house is still located in the center of the property. The semicircular driveway that existed in 1927 still exists. The orchards are gone, but much of the home's historic character remains. The structures proposed for removal include a shed and a detached garage. The shed was built in the 1940s, and the detached garage was built in '27 concurrently with the home. The project will also retain most of the original semicircular driveway. The Historic Preservation Commission reviewed the proposal and the proposed demolition of the shed and the garage, as well as the proposed development. The commission found that the shed and garage were not significant historic resources. The commission also supported the proposed development and found that the development was consistent with the Secretary of Interior standards for treatment of historic properties. This slide illustrates the proposed development project. The existing home, again, will remain, as well as much of the semicircular driveway. And around the existing home will be arrayed, six residential buildings and two groups of three, there and there, and a one-story multipurpose building interspersed with open space that includes both active and passive open space amenities. The proposed Spanish Revival style of architecture in the new buildings is designed to work well with the existing home, compatible with its architecture. And the existing home will be adaptively reused as part of the project. And the applicant's going to go through much more detail on the proposed architecture of the project. The project proposes to change the site's general plan designation to urban high-three residential. The UH3 designation is appropriate for the site because it fronts onto a major street with adequate infrastructure, transit services, and jobs across the street for the residents. Use of the existing traffic signal with modifications provides a safe vehicular and pedestrian access. There won't be a new traffic signal, but the existing signal that serves Lowe's and Safeway will be modified to provide signalized access into and out of the property, as well as a signalized pedestrian crossing. The planning commission staff therefore recommend approval of the proposed general plan amendment. The project also proposes to rezone the project's site to multiple-family residential. The MFR designation is intended for sites where you have a transition from residential to commercial properties within the city. The proposed buildings are finely detailed and comparable in height and massing to the surrounding neighborhood. Maximum building heights are 24 feet, and the height from ground to eve is about 18 feet. So again, comparable to the surrounding homes. This is also well within the normal height limits, which would allow up to 35-foot-tall two-story homes. In addition to the zoning and general plan changes, the project requires council approval of several additional permits. Those include a vesting tentative parcel map, which is to merge the two properties into, to create the development site. The site plan and design review is for the review of the proposed architecture, landscape, design, and site layout. The certificate of appropriateness is to allow the demolition of the shed and detached garage, and for the adaptive reuse and restoration of the existing home. And finally, the housing implementation program is for the allocation of 44 units out of the city's transferable development credits program. Leading up to this council hearing, the project has gone through a number of public meetings, as well as smaller meetings in the homes of some of the adjacent neighbors. The HPC and Planning Commission both have recommended approval of the project. The city announced the HPC and Planning Commission hearings via mailers to properties that were within 300 feet of the property and ads in the newspaper. The applicant also placed a courtesy notice sign on the project's First Street frontage. During the initial meetings, a number of the neighbors beyond that 30-foot radius shared their concerns that they had not received notices of the meetings. For the subsequent community meetings that were held at the Robert Livermore Community Center and this city council meeting tonight, the city expanded the mailing to cover over 200 properties, extending much farther into the Pulte Estates neighborhood. The city and the applicant, a lot of concerns at the meetings, and have worked to address them through project changes, conditions of approval, and through sharing of additional information. The staff report that the council has summarizes all of the concerns that were shared by the neighbors. But I wanted to just touch on three that came up most frequently. A number of neighbors shared concerns about traffic and safety on First Street. MidPenn Housing and Sunflower Hill share that concern about the safety of their residents. And the project's improvements include modifying the signal on First Street to provide a safe, signalized crossing, both for vehicles and for pedestrians. The city and the applicant's traffic engineer reviewed that proposed design and found that it would provide a safe crossing for pedestrians. Another concern that was raised had to do with neighborhood compatibility, the project's compatibility with its existing context. As I mentioned, the site includes grade changes, and those grade changes will be landscaped to provide screening. In addition, the mix of one- and two-story buildings are comparable in scale to the surrounding neighborhood. Also, the site is designed to limit access to and from the adjacent neighborhood. The project will have two gate back corners of the property, but those gates will be secured to provide access only to emergency personnel into the site. Then finally, some neighbors were concerned about the potential for the property changing hands and being developed by a for-profit developer with apartments at market rate that might lack the design quality of this project and the regulatory guarantees that are in place. The city of Livermore is a partner in this project and is providing a long-term loan that will help in the purchase of the property. And as part of that, there'll be a recorded regulatory agreement on the property that will have a term of 55 years. The agreement stipulates strict maintenance standards and requires that the development obtain affordable housing for developmentally disabled adults for a minimum of that 55-year term of the agreement. Furthermore, the proposed zoning and general plan amendments that I described will not go into effect until that regulatory agreement is executed. So that ensures that the zoning and general plan changes will not happen until the agreement is in place. That concludes the staff overview. Both the staff, Historic Preservation Commission, and Planning Commission recommend that the city council certify the environmental document and approve the project, including the entitlements that are listed on the screen. And staff is available for questions, and the applicant and their design team also would like to give a presentation.
Okay. Any questions for the staff at this point? Okay, very good. Thank you. Carry
Mayor, City Council, I am Susan Houghton. I am President of the Board of Directors for Sunflower Hill. And on behalf of our advisors and our partners, MidPenn, Dahlin, BKF Engineers, Gates Landscape, we're very honored to be able to present to you what we believe is a wonderful project for the city of Livermore. We have Dahlin Architect, who's going to walk you through some of the details of the project, and specifically address some of the concerns that you heard from the neighbors, some of the things that we feel made this a better project, since it came before Planning Commission and the Historic Preservation Committee. But before we do, we want to honor and thank staff for their hard work, Frances, Ben, Steve, Eric, and really, the entire city for helping us collaborate together to do something that we think is going to be very innovative for the city of Livermore if it is approved. So we are happy, MidPenn and I, Jan is here from MidPenn. We're happy to address questions after Lori presents, but I'd like to turn it over now to see the specifics of what we think is a very beautiful project. Lori?
Great. Thank you, Susan. As Susan noted, Lori Moffett Felberg, I'm a senior principal with Dahlin Group Architecture Planning. And we are thrilled to be here tonight. Again, this has been such a collaborative process with city staff and with the neighbors. And I'll get into that a little bit more in a bit. And I'm going to go relatively quickly because staff did a great job presenting the basics of the project. But as noted, this is 45 units, 44 for developmentally disabled adults, and one onsite manager. So we have full-time onsite manager. You can see the existing home there. And then there's a number of onsite amenities that go with the community. This is the context of the site plan. And one of the things, we spent a lot of time working with Sunflower Hill and with MidPenn to really craft a community that fits within the scale of the neighborhood. That was very important to all of us. And if you take a look at just the size of the homes, you can see what we had to work with in terms of the neighborhood context. These are views from the surrounding area. Obviously, view from across First Street, looking into one of the western-end gated entrance. This is a view in the property itself, again, across the property, looking in the other gated entrance, and looking from across First Street. Obviously, these photos were taken last summer when there hadn't been an ounce of water. So it's a tad brown. This is more of the surrounding context, looking at across at the Safeway, the gas station, again, the western view from the surrounding area, southwest view, and from the northwest cul-de-sac. You can see all the different viewpoints there. The existing home, lovely existing home. We are always thrilled and challenged when we have an existing structure this lovely to work with. And gratefully, we had a project here that could be compatible with this. We felt that was very important to honor the history of this home, not only architecturally, but also through the village that we crafted around it. So again, it's a beautiful home that we have great plans for, and it will retain its historic value and aesthetics. So back to the site plan. Again, if you look at the scale of the rooftops, you can see they're very much in keeping with our individual buildings. And this is part of the foundation of the thought process on this community. It's really crafted, oops, as a village, so that we have the historic house in the center. We have the circular, semicircular driveway. Here we have the light, the existing light. And this will be the new vehicular access into the site. So vehicles will pull through and ride on out and back onto First Street. We've kept intact both of these historically located entrances, but this one is turned into a pedestrian access. So the visibility that was important to the Historic Guild will be preserved, but we've just moved the vehicular access down to this side. So as Ben noted, there's three of the residential buildings here, and three over here, and a multipurpose amenity building here, all really surrounding this existing home in the center, and the various outdoor activity areas for the residents. We've got outdoor lawn area, a pool, sport court, and then a courtyard that the multipurpose building really surrounds and creates this indoor-outdoor space. So it's a beautiful community. And these are some visuals that show you the character of the community three dimensionally. Again, you can see First Street, that drive through, the parking, the historic home, the residence building surrounding, the multipurpose building, and the outdoor amenities, really in the center with everything surrounding. You can also see the grade. You can start to see the grade changes between us and the neighborhood and the relative scale of the homes. So this is the photo simulation along First Street. There is an existing privacy wall along First Street that we are not modifying. We're keeping it intact. These palm trees are existing along First Street. They are to remain. We're going to freshen up the landscaping along the base, though. It's gotten rather overgrown in the last few years. We just want to freshen it up. Little closer in, you can see how we've taken that vehicular access and doing a pedestrian gate in. The palm trees along the front edge, and the vision of the historic house there. As we come into the site, you'll start to see the approach and entry sequencing into the community historic home here. What was the vehicular access, now the pedestrian gate in the center. And here's where you can really see the historic home, part of this village concept. These are existing trees. We're preserving a number of existing trees on the site. Here you start to see the outdoor amenity space with the community building in the backdrop. You can see the slope in the background, how much higher the residences in the back are than the community here. Another view of that area. And a view looking more to the west, the historic home, the pool that we're adding, that outdoor play area, the community build, and some of the residential homes here. We did work with the neighbors to sculpt these buildings, to start to pull back and drop some of the second story to single story, and helped us reflect neighborhood concerns as we went through that community outreach process. Just another view of that area. This is the type of sculpting I was speaking to, where we're dropping some of the two-story down to a single story. And again, we worked really hard on the architecture to create a look that if I didn't tell you that this was multifamily, it would just look like a beautiful Spanish home. We wanted it to blend into the neighborhood that well. Some mailbox and trellis features. And then this is just a look at all the existing trees that we're keeping on the site. There's a large, I'm blanking on what it is. My landscape architect could probably tell me. Big coniferous tree, whole row of trees along this edge, the palm trees, and several other trees in the center. And then the access question. So we have existing First Street. We have the existing stoplight here. So all we're doing is modifying this to allow vehicular access here into the site. So this is kind of like the eye doctor A and B. So initially, here's our median, here's our traffic light, and then here's our traffic light with vehicular access, and simply adding a left-turn pocket. So it's a very simple change between the two, existing and proposed for the new community. So again, as part of the community outreach, we really delved into what's the view from off-site. Even though we aren't taking any vehicular or pedestrian access from the community, we wanted to make sure that we were compatible and actually complemented the residences in our surrounding area. So this is looking from Elliott Drive, from the little knuckle in the drive here. And this is the existing you see today. So this is the view after we've dropped in the buildings, per the topography, per the civil drawings, and what you would see after that occurs. You can see here, we actually had to point it out because the mangate that we're adding into the fence... into the fence... Oh! Do I get to keep going?
Please.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, I will speed it up. The mangate is very innocuous, and there's a little six-foot red curb here, just to zoom in a little closer so people could see that. Again, very innocuous to the existing condition. Then we had the neighbor directly adjacent to us that was gracious enough to allow us to have access to their backyard, to really study things from that perspective. So that's really this neighborhood here on Elliott Drive, this is the existing condition. And this is after refencing and adding landscaping with those two-story buildings there that are, again, sculpted to drop down and really address the neighborhood well. So it's, again, very innocuous from the neighborhood side. This is the Milton Way side from this knuckle over here as the road bends around. What I want to point out is the profile of the existing trees. And then afterwards, here's again a profile, very close to the existing trees, even though we're replacing trees in this area. You can see the buildings in this area. Again, sculpted buildings, good detailing, there are no backs to these buildings, they have foresight texture, and the detailing continues all the way around. So as they address the neighborhood, they actually enhance the neighborhood. So that was all I had to say. If you have any questions, happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Just a quick...
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, a quick question, going back to the Milton View. So you have, how far, what's the setback on the building that's the closest to the fence? Because this is the residence that's the most at-grade to the existing site, so what's the setback?
So actually, there...
If you have another slide, too.
Yeah.
I really can't tell from that slide and the views from the windows on the second stories.
So at the ground floor, it's about 15 feet.
Okay.
And then the second floor from the fence is about 26. So the building step as well.
Gotcha, okay. And that building profile, if you go back a few slides, that it just has impacted, if you compare it to the existing home, so it's offset, so it's not looking into the backyard?
Uh, yeah.
You had it in that one slide that was right there?
Yes, 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 yeah. And again, that was part of working with the neighborhood. We actually pushed, when we went through Planning Commission, they were full two-story buildings. We actually reconfigured the living spaces and pushed a corner of that building in so that it could come down to a single-story element on those edges. So again, we worked very closely with staff, even though it was a change from Planning Commission, we felt like it addressed the neighborhood concerns, and actually, quite frankly, made the architecture better. So again, working very closely with staff on that.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments at this point? Any questions for the presentation? Just a quick question, you could back up a couple more slides for the aerial view. One more back. Yeah, there we go. Okay, so where are the two back gates?
There is one approximately here.
Okay, chaucer.
And one approximately here. And they're mangates, they're only for emergency personnel.
So no BRTs, big red trucks, sorry.
Yeah, no. No!
BRTs, but big red trucks.
I didn't get that, sorry. No vehicular access, just mangates.
It took me a while before I got that acronym, so it's okay.
Okay. And there will not be resident access out of those gates either. So it's not that people are going to be coming from the community out into the neighborhood that way. All resident and vehicle traffic will come from First Street.
Okay, and since we're on that slide, the crosswalk in the lower right-hand portion, that's the one that's going to be modified?
This stoplight will be modified because right now it's a T-intersection, it's a three-way light, so it'll have that fourth leg added.
Okay. And this is going to be a similar sort of thing for Mr. San Diego? It'll be a similar light to what they've got at the Arroyo and Home, Royal Crossing at Holmes where it's on a demand light? Where it doesn't go off routinely, it just goes off on demand?
Yeah, we'll only, the pedestrian signal will only come on when someone presses the button.
Yeah, that's like on the one at Holmes and the Royal Crossing. Okay, very good, thank you. Any other questions at this point? Okay, I've got, very good, thank you. Got public comments, probably a little bit under a dozen cards perhaps. Okay, so please keep your comments to three minutes if you could. I have Lynn Monica, Heather Gro, and Audrey Missoni.
Hi, thank you, Mayor and Council members. My name is Lynn Monica, I'm on the board of Sunflower Hill, and I'm also the Director of Sunflower Hill Gardens at Hagman Ranch, which Jeff just spoke about. I have a stepson who's special needs, he's 22-years-old, Jacob Elfin, and he has one more year in the Granada High Transition Program. That program participates in the Sunflower Hill Gardens, and if, I think some of you or most of you have had a chance to go out there, but the garden is designed specifically to provide educational and vocational training for special needs individuals. They're the norm in the garden, and it's really interesting and fun to see how happy, productive, and fulfilled they are when they're in that safe and supportive environment working with others like them. And people have made comments about that in the neighborhood, how wonderful the garden is to the community. And we're also giving back to the community through our donations, which is 17,000 pounds since the beginning, breaking ground there, so, want to give us a plug for that. But anyway, this is what we need in the way of housing for individuals, for these individuals. We need to provide them a safe and supportive residential community designed for them, a place where the services they need, a place where they are the norm, and a place where they can call home and live and grow with old, grow old with friends. So on behalf of my, of the board, my family, Jacob and his friends in the community, I'm asking for your support of this community, and thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Monica. Heather Gro, Audrey Missoni, and Alice Ray.
Hello, I'm Heather Gro, I'm the Executive Director with Open Heart Kitchen. Sunflower Hills supplies us with fresh produce, they donate it for our meal programs, and this project is going to open up many opportunities for future collaboration between our two organizations, so we hope that you support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Audrey Missoni, Alice Ray, Gina Rochelle.
Hello, I'm Audrey Missoni. I actually live right next door to the proposed development, and for those of you that were here on the Planning Commission, I had a lot of reservation and a lot of concerns, and I honestly just wanted to thank both Lori and Susan for being so gracious to, you know, come over to our house a few different times, really work with us on what some of our concerns were, and really be good neighbors by making it a win-win for both of us. So, you know, I support the project and am thankful again for some of the concessions that they've made for us.
Well, thank you very much for your comments tonight, that's greatly appreciated. Thank you. Alice Ray, Gina Rochelle, and John Elfin.
Good evening, Mayor Marchand, our Livermore Council and city staff. I have to say...
If you could pull the mic down just a little bit, please.
Oh, sure.
Thank you.
Nobody in our community is questioning the good cause that they want, but I, as a neighbor, have problems with it, and I believe it's the area that's the problem. So I would like to start off by saying, thank God for our country's democracy, because otherwise people like myself would have no say about what happens to their own community. Although the Sunflower Hill project was vastly created and planned undercover, as most of our affected neighborhood can attest, we, the community, can still come to our elected officials and decision-makers to state our objections as to what happens to our neighborhood. And by the way, yes, there have been meetings about this change, but only after the courtesy sign was up and the neighborhood started to ask questions. Here are some of our objections. One, we don't want the zone to be changed from low-medium density to high density as well as Section 8 housing. Why? Because we bought our homes under the existing zones with the expectation that it would remain the same. Furthermore, it's currently all single-family residential homes on the west side of First Street from Las Pocitas to Scott Street. Why would you want to plunk a high-density, multi-building project right in the middle of this? A perfect analogy would be if there was a need for a county hospital, you wouldn't place it right in the middle of a purely residential neighborhood. That's why we have zones in place. Two, this Sunflower Hill development will fail, and it more or less is destined to fail, because this location is just not safe for its inhabitants to cross such a busy street as First Street. What then? If the zone is changed to high density, the prospect of someone else coming along wanting to put some other Section 8 real estate there is a real possibility. Three, another signal light, and I realize it's not a light per se, but it's another stop there. Between Las Pocitas and North Mines, we don't need more lights, it's certainly, we already have a multitude of signal lights there. Also, number four, also we have been told at previous meetings that this proposed project will not be intrusive to our neighborhood. Well, of course it will. The mere fact that the plan calls for two different emergency cyclone gates, along with curbsides painted red at both locations automatically is an intrusion, because even though these entrances are only for emergencies, the neighborhood can no longer park at these painted curbsides. Five, in listening to Sunflower Hill proponents at the October 18th and November 17th city meeting, most of them seem to be from Dublin or Pleasanton. You, our Livermore elected officials, have been voted in to represent Livermore residents, and we, Livermore residents vehemently object to this zoning change. I've only got one more. Six, last but not least, rules and regulations are formed for a reason. So is the city going to change our zoning at will? What's next? Changing zoning and tearing down our beloved vineyards? Thank you very much for your attention to our plight and respectfully request your support of our directly affected community by denying the proposed zone change. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Ray. Gina Rochelle, John Elfin, Tori Blue.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Livermore City Council. My name is Gina Rochelle, and I am the younger sister of a special needs adult. And my sister is going to be 55-years-old, and it's taken a long time for us to find a settled place for her. And I can't imagine what some of these parents who have children who are just entering their adulthood or in their early twenties must think as time goes on when their child turns 55, where will they live when they're no longer here and there may not be a sibling or another family member that can take care of them? Nor would they maybe want those people to be burdened with the additional care that would be required. Here we have an opportunity in Livermore to create something beautiful, to be a culture of caring, to include diversity, and really embrace a segment of society that has been underserved, not only in this community, but in communities across the country. We have an opportunity to have a jewel within our community that represents a very important and inclusive part of this community. These children, now adults, need a place to live, and we have the rare opportunity to do something terrific for a group of people that are historically underserved. I urge the council to support Sunflower Hill's plan, to support building a life for young adults moving into their adulthood, so that they can have many of the same things that you and I enjoy every day, just because we're not mentally disabled. Thank you.
Thank you. You're doing so well, you're doing so well there. Remember, I want everybody to feel comfortable speaking, and so I don't allow booing in the audience, because I don't want anybody to feel uncomfortable. Equal time, if I don't allow booing, then I typically don't allow applause either. So if you agree with what people are saying, simply raise your hand. That way, the people that are speaking to the audience don't see, or speaking to the council, don't see whether the group agrees or disagrees with them, because only we can see that. So we can see the positive or negative. So just, if you agree, raise your hand, and that way we can move things along. So great, thank you very much for your cooperation. John Elfin, Tori Blue, Cynthia Rivera. Mr. Elfin?
Hi, thanks, thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm John Elfin, I'm one of the advisors to the board and one of the original people that sat down one day with Susan about five years ago to come up with this dream, which has evolved a little bit. But first of all, I want to say thank you to Livermore for being so supportive and offering and giving the opportunity for Hagman Ranch, which as Lynn said, has been an incredible opportunity, not just for the special needs people who work there and grow because of it, but we've also, it's been a win-win, as the person from Open Heart Kitchen said, we've given, I think it's over, well over 10,000 pounds of food to...
17,000.
Seven, thank you, Mayor, 17,000.
Pay attention.
It's a problem I have. But the main thing is, I'm here, I'm here as a father of a special needs son, and 80%, 80% or more of special needs adults live at home with their parents. And the thing that has driven us, and particularly some of the board members who work tirelessly for the last five years, because there needs to be a community, a safe place, and a home for our children to live when we're older and we're gone. It's something that we think about every single day. And we have an opportunity to create 44 places to live for these special needs adults. That is a drop, and believe me, I appreciate it if this gets approved, but that is a drop in the bucket of the need. Even just in Livermore, there are multiples of 44 kids, or 44 adults. I've been a Special Olympics basketball coach for 15 years, and a lot of the same athletes started about yay-high, now they're this high. And I know one of them that lives alone with help in an apartment, the rest of them are at home with their parents. So this is an unbelievable need and a fantastic opportunity, so of course I ask your support to approve it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Tori Blue, Cynthia Rivera, Glenn Peterson.
Mayor, City Council. My name is Tori Blue, I am actually a neighbor. A lot of the diagrams there, you see my house. Look, bottom line, this isn't about us not wanting special needs. I have a sister-in-law, she's schizophrenic, she's Action 8 housing, she pays for it, it's hard, I understand that. The issue here, we bought in a, in an established neighborhood. A lot of us have children, they have allergies, and you're talking about coming in, rezoning it. So here's a couple of quick things, I know I have three minutes. So, right now, everything is zoned, open space, no agriculture. I am totally okay with having the current tenant move away, cleaning out all the skunks and the illegal beehives. I'm happy about that. The problem is, the rezoning, I'm not happy about it. Everybody that has a stake in this for money, I was telling you, this is a great thing, we're going to have this 55-year commitment, the problem is here. Changes to those terms of the regulatory agreement would require agreement between the city of Livermore, the property owner, and the authorization by the city council. If the city council right now is saying yes to the rezoning, they're going to allow any other property, after we've discussed this zoning, to any, to happen at all. It's going to allow three-story, 35-foot apartment buildings or whatever. We do not have a guarantee that this establishment is going to succeed. And based on that, this whole thing is driven by money. If this fails, the city has already rezoned this property, you are not going to disallow the stacked housing that we see happening in First Street. It's going to happen. So first, so first and foremost is the rezoning should not happen. This is a money play. Nobody is, the only reason we're having a discussion now is because people are asking for our opinion. Once it's rezoned, there's no more opinions required from the current tenants that bought an established property. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Blue. Cynthia Rivera, Glenn Peterson, Jeff Caskey.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm very nervous, I've never spoken before.
You're welcome here. It's safe.
We'll see.
Deep breath, it's safe.
I would like you to kindly acknowledge that we are single-family home residents in need of your strong consideration. Sunflower Hill has a board of directors, an architectural firm, and a builder. The city of Livermore, which I now understand is pairing with this development...
Just be closer to the mic if you would, please. Thank you.
Is that better?
It's all good, yes.
Okay. The city of Livermore has the planning department, attorney counsel, I suppose more. As residences, our avenue to be heard is really here... As residences, our avenue to be heard is really here at city council. I want to tell you a personal point. My grandfather was the director of our special needs service in the county I grew up in. I did many, many, many wonderful days volunteering. My grandmother was a social worker for senior citizens. I come from people who have great heart. I have not objections at all to this project. I congratulate them that they have indeed succeeded in Pleasanton with their project. My major concern here is about the rezoning and the density. I feel that, well, it's really not about feeling, it is basically that the process that occurred was geared towards the project is done. Just seven neighbors were notified in the surrounding area. We have approximately 100-plus. I walked around the houses on Sunday to actually ask neighbors on Belmar, on Chaucer. I know we have a special needs wonderful resident on Chaucer. I found that nearly 70% of the people were objectioning, objecting to the density. And I hope that we can keep in mind that that really is the primary issue. It is unfortunate for our neighborhood to be categorized otherwise. It is understandable that our residents truly just want to be heard. The planning meetings were geared towards objections we had, which is a natural process, but just simply that we urge you to have a no vote on the rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rivera. Glenn Peterson, Jeff Caskey, Luana Layton.
Mayor, City Council staff, thanks for the opportunity to speak. I would like to encourage you to support the Sunflower Hill project. My name is Glenn Peterson. I'm the father of a 28-year-old autistic man, Aaron Peterson. I'm an advisor to Sunflower Hill and have been associated with this organization for a number of years. I have been on the board of the Housing Consortium of the East Bay in the past for a number of years, and I've studied a lot of models of different housing opportunities for adults with developmental disabilities. Sunflower Hill is focused on the concept of community, and it's unusual, and it's not unheard of, of course, but most of the housing opportunities for disabled adults and other disabled people doesn't incorporate this aspect of community, sort of like the assisted or assisted living type of, or senior housing kind of model. So it's the right model, it's the best of the ones that I have seen. As you know, the need is great, the support is absolutely needed and very much appreciated, and I encourage you to vote in favor of the development of this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Jeff Caskey, Luana Layton, Dan Fahey.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. Again, Jeff Caskey, and I am the president of the Livermore Heritage Guild. I'm here to reiterate the Heritage Guild board's support for this project. We were invited out to see the site. We have engaged with the architects. There were modifications made based on some of our recommendations. We are delighted with the way the project has gone forward. We've heard a lot this evening, and I certainly echo the thoughts about how wonderful it is to have a project like this and how needful the community is, but it's also a good project. It's a, the massing is correct, the scale is correct, it'll be a quiet campus in this neighborhood. I think this is a good project for the neighborhood as well as being a good idea. I also want to note that, on a personal side, so that's the position of the board of the Livermore Heritage Guild, but on a personal side, we also have been working with Sunflower Hill at the Hagman Ranch now for a couple of years. They've been great neighbors there. The special needs adults, special needs kids have been great to work with. I really look forward to having this as an opportunity for them and keeping them partners in Livermore. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Caskey. Luana Layton, Dan Fahey, and Devin Snead. Who's Layton?
Yes. My husband and I purchased this property in 1977, and as is condition. At that time, we were located in Alameda County, and we're out of the city of Liver, we're not part of Livermore at all. We did a lot of work on this home, including but not limited to the foundation work, rewiring, new furnace roof, just about everything. We raised three chickens, three children.
And a bunch of chickens.
Lots of chickens, okay. All right. Yeah, we did. Oh, that was terrible. Okay. We raised, we raised three children, some chickens, a geese, and a goat there. Okay? We have been in consultation with a number of developers, including some who have taken, who would have taken down the existing home. After representatives from Sunflower Hill viewed the property, they immediately sat down with us and shared their vision. Both Tom and myself knew in our hearts that this was the one. We feel honored and blessed to be part of this very needed housing community. When we purchased the property, our land and all the surrounding land up to Portola Avenue and all the way to Las Pecitas Road was agricultural. In fact, it was, it was four miles to walk around the block. The land behind us was very gradual, had a very gradual rise, and I can give you kind of a picture, but it's kind of just like a, like a horizon rise. We just had a barbed wire fence, but you can see, you know, there was nothing there, just very gradual. Okay. And Sylvan Rooney grazed his cattle on the land surrounding, and we watered, surrounding ours, and we watered his cattle. Our driveway and land in the front went, went up to where the median was on in First Street. Okay? And we did not fight the widening of the road, although we did have grounds to fight it. Okay? And then, when Polte was going to put the houses in, they started grading, and this is, the grade is only halfway high. After I took this picture, I went to Florida and I came back two weeks later, and it was like a huge mountain behind us. Because that, that's because we have something in Livermore called the Sina Corridor, and so the houses that were built kind of up higher, you couldn't, you were not allowed to see the chimneys from the freeway. So all that dirt came on our property. Okay? So that's why, and we signed off for it too, to do it. Okay? We did not fight Polte Homes in the development because the housing was needed. Do you think we wanted all those shopping centers around us either? Okay, forget it. Okay? No. But, but Livermore needed those, those stores and businesses. They also provided a great tax base so that we could build all those baseball and soccer parks. All right? We foresee that this project will provide these residents an opportunity to use their gifts, reach their full potential, and walk into their destiny.
Ms. Layton, this is your home, is it not?
Yes.
Yes, that's right. Thank you. Dan Fahey, Devin Snead.
Hi, my name's Dan Fahey. I live at 42, my wife Bev and I live at 4289 Milton Way. We're one of the five houses that abut the property. We're the only one-story house that abuts the property, and we will be affected more than arguably anybody else. We're going to lose some of our view, we'll lose some privacy, we're going to have to put up with construction noise. When we moved in, you know, in 2000, we bought, you know, we liked living next to this, you know, there's a lot of, you know, privacy and all that good stuff. But we're always afraid that maybe a strip mall, five-story apartment building, something like that might be built. This project, we support 100%. We think it's a good, a good project, you know, it's a noble cause, and we're in support of it. Thank you.
Mr. Fahey, thank you. Devin Snead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, staff. My name is Devin Snead. I'm a Livermore resident here, and I've, I'm actually, live with autism and ADD, and I actually am in full support of this project here. I mean, these guys, wow. I mean, I could say in a lot of words on paper here, but I think I want to speak from the heart on this. Because I feel like this project is something meaningful, something productive for the city of Livermore, and I would love for this approval to happen if, if need be. I mean, I see this as a progress, a sign of progress for the city, and like, it can help, like, create some short-term jobs, and help revitalize our economy here, and I think that's something we need here. Thank you.
Mr. Snead, thank you very much. And finally, Splend, Splendorio.
Splend, Splendorio, on behalf of Innovation Tri-Valley, and I'm sorry I put the card in so late because I assumed my boss, Dale Kay, was going to speak.
She was here.
She was here, and I guess she's probably to take care of her husband, which she should do. So on behalf of Innovation Tri-Valley, we fully support this project. As some of you know, we represent some of the major employers and their employees throughout our region, and this sort of housing, this sort of availability, this sort of opportunity for some of the adults that we know are in our community, that work in our community, that participate in all the services we have and all the wonderful things we have in our area, is desperately needed. So on behalf of Innovation Tri-Valley, I urge you to support and approve this project.
Mrs. Splendorio, thank you very much. Okay, that's it for the cards that I have. I'm going to close the public hearing. Any additional questions at this point? Okay. Vice Mayor, Spodovski?
Sure, just one for staff. Are there any considerations for Tri-Valley residents throughout the application process? If you can explain a little bit about that. You know, we are using local funding, it would be nice to just, you know, go over what are the application criteria.
Yes. Can you hear me? So yes, as a matter of, it's very common when the city provides funding for an affordable housing project such as this, that there is a Livermore preference for, in the leasing and the lease-up and the marketing of the project. So that people who are existing residents of Livermore and people who work in the community or who volunteer, in the case of if it's a special needs population, who perhaps they do not work, they're not employed, but they have, are they are residents and they have a Livermore connection, that they are provided with a preference so that they would then be screened first in the list of applicants when the project goes for lease-up.
Okay. And is there a second tier for Tri-Valley residents? I mean, we're talking local. I would like to keep it local if this, if this moves forward.
It's, it's something that we have not, we don't have as our standard, but that's something that, you know, could be considered.
Okay. And at what point does that need to be considered? Is that tonight, or is that when we come back for funding?
You will, we anticipate bringing the loan request from the Development Partnership and the regulatory agreement for city council's consideration at the next council meeting.
Great. Okay, thank you.
But if you'd like to do that, if you let us know tonight, then we can incorporate that into the, into what we bring back to you.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any additional questions?
Because the city manager is probably best equipped to handle this. When I first moved here, I do believe that hillside was a hillside full of cows. Did that property, for Polte's purposes, have to be rezoned?
Yes, the property went through a general plan amendment process and then a rezoning, then it ultimately went through a development review process, but yes. At the, as the current property owner owns the house noted to you 30 years ago, that property was in Alameda County. It was first annexed into the city, then the general plan and the zoning were changed on the property.
Thank you.
Any questions? And going through the letters, people were talking, some of the concerns were that the, the reason that the density is so high on this property is that this would maximize the profits for the developers, and that the city was going to be profiting on this, this project as well. Could you elaborate on that, please?
Yes. So Mid, both MidPenn Housing and Sunflower Hill are both nonprofit organizations, and the proposed development would be a nonprofit affordable housing project, so by definition, the project will not generate profits. And any, if there is any residual revenue in the project, that would be redirected back to support operations and to support tenant services on the site as a first priority, and then to, then secondly, to repay any sort of public loans that have gone in to help develop the project.
Okay, thank you. And there's a lot of concern about safety on the property, and it sounds, from Mr. Murray and Mr. Sende Diego, those safety concerns have been addressed as far as crossing the street and the residents on the property.
Yes.
And it was also clear that we are not tearing down a historic building, that that building is going to remain. And that there was concern that this project, and we've heard this from several residents, that the project is destined to fail, that it is not viable. Could you speak to that as well, please?
MidPenn Housing is a, as you know, is a very qualified affordable housing developer. They are working on our Chestnut Square project in addition to this one. They have developed over 6,000 units of affordable housing throughout the Bay Area. And, and MidPenn, based on their reputation and our experience working with them, would not put forward a project that they felt was not viable. And in addition, we, city staff has reviewed the proposal and the development proposal, and we have experience in reviewing these sorts of special needs housing projects and feel that the project is viable.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Any further questions? Comments?
I'll go first. I, you know, listened to this, I think it's a wonderful project. I, I think the, it's a very thorough, and I would say responsive design to the neighborhood. I, it was, it's, the, the work you've done has made it very easy to visualize. I mean, you can really understand what it is, and I appreciate that. I mean, it makes it so much more real. So bottom line is, I think this is a great project that helps serve a very pressing need.
Vice Mayor?
Sure. In reading through the Planning Commission meeting, meeting minutes, it's really assuring to hear residents who had major concerns come back and now say that they support the project. I think it's a, it's an excellent example of how the system works, how we gather public input, and how we have interaction with the public prior to this phase. So I want to thank staff and everyone involved in this process. I think you've done an excellent job. I'd also like to thank Mr. Fahey for showing up and mentioning where he lives. I had a little bit of a concern about that location in particular, but I think that the setbacks combined with the stepping of the house, they really did a great job to address the need of your household, so thank you for making that comment. It is a very unique site in terms of no pedestrian access, no vehicular access from the surrounding neighborhoods. As I mentioned, the setbacks are very appropriate, and I believe that the grading significantly helps with this site. As I mentioned, the one site where it's at grade level, a lot has been done to address that concern. This is a, an excellent example of an adaptive reuse of a historic use of building, so it's a building that is historic and will be reused in perpetuity and hopefully maintained to a very high standard. I think it's a very thoughtful design overall. Excellent job with the, the architecture and blending in with the building and the surrounding neighborhood. And I do believe during the next round, I would like to see what a second tier for Tri-Valley residents would look like. I don't think, being aware of potential unintended consequences, I'd like staff to possibly write that up in the next round. Far too often with, with projects, either special needs or senior-specific projects, we have great intentions to build them for our local residents, but then depending on the funding structure and how they're, they are built, sometimes we do see people from out of the area coming in very quickly. So I'd like to see what we can do to, to limit that. But I do think it's an, it's an excellent, very unique project, and it's just a great job all around. So thank you.
Okay. Comments, Councilman Recumber?
Well, I've got way too much to say to do it all tonight, but I know how hard Sunflower Hills have worked with the neighborhood, going door-to-door, getting out, speaking with everybody, speaking around town. I know so many of their kids. I know these are young adults who really want to make a life for themselves, and as a parent of a, I am not a parent of a special needs kid. However, I've worked with them for many years when I was much younger. I got out of high school by working with the Alameda County Development Agency way back in 1972 and '03. back in 1972 and '03. And I know that even back then, parents were always saying, there are parents there in their 70s with 30 to 40-year-old kids. They had no idea where they were to go. And there was a time when they simply went to San Luis State Hospital or Napa State Hospital to live out the rest of their lives. And this kind of a development, this kind of an opportunity is something, well, let me stop for a second. I know how hard it is to find a place if you're physically disabled. It's got to have one story, unless you like going downstairs, you know? It's, you know, getting up there is one thing, coming back down, you know? You want that early cup of coffee. You're going to be awake by the time you get downstairs. I know how difficult it is when you can, when you have to consider your 20 to 25, 28-year-old son or daughter says, you know, when do I get to go out? When do I have my own place? When I want to get a job? And make no mistake, they will work. You'll need only go over to the Sunflower Hill Garden over at Hagman Ranch to see how hard they work and what they produce. But they're not going to come home with a six-figure income anytime soon. They don't have that capability. That they have already proven to me, the ability to become good citizens of Livermore, good friends, good people that we can work with, that we can go over and pick their turnups with over at the farm. I am so pleased that this project is happening because it really, it will set a standard and more of these, I think, and it's good that Livermore is on the forefront of that standard.
Okay. Again, I agree that staff did a tremendous job and Sunflower Hill, the outreach to the community. We've heard that this was done undercover. There were a lot of meetings about this. There was a tremendous amount of outreach on this. A lot of staff work, a lot of community work. A lot of the concerns were addressed. Again, I was very impressed at the number of people that came up tonight and said, you know what? I had some real reservations about this, and they were won over. And Vice Mayor Spodowski pointed that out as well. So, the fact that there was a tremendous effort on this to make sure that this would fit within the community with a need that is very great in this community, and the fact that there are people with tremendous hearts that are willing to work within this community to be able to provide services for everybody so that everybody can live in a community that cares. I believe this has the potential to become a national model of how doing it right in a community and creating that sense of everybody looking out for each other and everybody working with each other and working with the community and the partnership with Hagman Farm and Open Heart Kitchen to serve those that are in great, great need in our community and people that are, that feel uplifted because they can also help and serve others in the community. So, I think there's a tremendous win for everyone here. And with that, I'd be willing to entertain a motion.
Sure. I'd be honored to move item 5.01. I don't know if I need to read all the resolutions, but I would like to just move it as an item as a whole.
Moved by Vice Mayor Spodowski, seconded by Councilmember Warner. Is there any discussion on the motion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstain? It panishes unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay, I'll allow that one. Thank you very much. This is a tremendous effort for the entire community. Thank you, one and all. And give yourselves a round of applause, too. Yeah, thank you. Five-minute break. Thank you. Okay, we are back to part two of the March 13 meeting of the Livermore City Council. Onto 6.01, matters for consideration. This is the discussion and direction regarding the 2017 state and federal legislative platform. We have Donna Ponto as the presenter.
Honorable Mayor and City Council Members, the 2017 state and federal legislative platform is before you this evening for your approval. This platform is a formalized proactive approach to monitoring and addressing legislative bills and activities based on Livermore core values and principles as well as your city council goals. The first platform was developed in 2013 for state legislative items, and the council directed staff to expand it to federal legislation in 2015. Thousands of bills are introduced each year in Sacramento and Washington, D.C., and city staff monitors those that particularly impact Livermore. The platform provides direction and allows city staff to quickly respond in support of or opposition to legislation, especially in time-sensitive situations. The platform is an evolving document and is updated each year through review of city needs and issues, staff input, and examination of the League of California cities' priorities and strategies. The 2017 categories are: city local control, fiscal stability, housing planning and sustainability, infrastructure, job creation and economic development, libraries, public safety, science, technology and innovation, transportation and parking, and finally, water. The platform is also posted on the city's website for all to see at www.cityoflivermore.net/legislation. Again, staff recommends the city council adopt a resolution approving the platform, and this concludes my brief presentation, and I'm available for any question.
Okay, any questions at this point for staff?
No, it's a heck of a list.
Yeah, we're busy folks.
You're all got it. You can spark.
Yeah. Any, no questions? Any discussion on the legislative platform? Any comments? Very comprehensive, a great, great job, especially like the two-word difference between capital and operational for the peg funds.
So, my only question is, how many weeks will it take to get it all done?
Well, I've been working for five years on the peg funds, if that gives you any, and we're trying to get two words added to it, and operating. So, okay.
So, one other thing, I would say this is, you know, it's a very comprehensive list, and it's something that's sort of, it's been the same for many years, right? I mean, basically, right? And, I mean, it's sort of-
It has slight modifications, but it's our core values and principles.
That's what I'm saying. It's, this is, represents our core values and what we stand for. There are no major modifications to this, so just pointing that out. There's no need to, I mean, just keep plugging away.
Okay, do I have a motion to accept the legislative platform?
Move to accept is presented to us.
Moved by Councilmember Coomer.
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Warner. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, opposition, or abstentions? It passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Tremendous amount of work putting all that together, so greatly appreciate that. And with that, we move on to matters initiated and committee reports. Let's go, Councilmember Coomer.
Well, let's see, since we've last met, we went to, I, they, we had a LAVTA board meeting, and, boy, a variety of topics discussed, and I, of course, didn't bring my folder of paperwork in with me, but we went through a lot of issues, including the self-driving cars. And that was, that was interesting to me. I won't be riding in one for a few years anyway, until we know they work. But they're, they're breaking them out in the Bishop Ranch complex now, so they'll be able to travel around over there. It was really kind of fun to watch, a little presentation on that.
All right. Councilmember Warner?
Went to the LCAC meeting. It was mentioned that there was the vote to do an economic study of the impact of the arts on the economy. And you heard a couple of people in the Citizens Forum talk about that. So, I would, you know, suggest that maybe staff do some preliminary work on that, and we get some other heads to nod. And I, and this is what I mean by that, is what would it take to do the study? What would be the purpose of the study or the use of the study? I know, and it was mentioned that you'd want comparable cities. I think if we did such a study, we also have to understand that other cities are not structured like we're structured in the fact that we've got LARPD, and that if you saw that it was mentioned that the arts impacts, say, the property values. Well, that impacts the taxes that are collected by the three organizations that manage Livermore, not just the city, but also LARPD and the school district. And then if we do a study and we do the comparable, comparability, we'd want to see what other cities do in funding the arts and through what department, because in many cases, it's through the recreation department. So, let's, let's really understand the full context. I think it would be worth doing. And just as a, as an aside, I think that as a city, we should step up to the question of to what extent do we want to fund the arts and how? And so, you know, I mentioned to try and get it on the Intergovernmental Committee meeting that we actually discuss that, because it would be a, up to the three jurisdictions that collect taxes in the city to think about that. So, we should collectively address it, I think. So, my request at this point is, let's have the staff do a little bit of work to outline what a study would entail and what it would cost and timeframes. Does that seem agreeable?
Seems reasonable. Okay. Yeah, and, but again, as you pointed out, for example, the Hayward Area Recreation and Park District, they're the ones that operate the theater program. They're the ones that operate the art galleries. They're the ones, so you're right, there is a very different funding mechanisms for the arts in different communities.
Well, and I think that, you know, within Livermore, the LCAC, I think, was founded under the auspices of the, of LARPD.
Yeah, originally formed. It was, it was-
So, I think over the years, the various people that have been on the City Council, the Board of Directors, have interpreted their obligations differently, and I think it's probably time for the organizations to collectively understand what's important here and how we're going to go about it. So, this would just maybe be one aspect of that. Rather than everybody just saying, oh, it's the other person's job, let's, let's step up and figure out what should be done and how.
Okay, well, just get, let's get some-
Right, this is just getting started, but I'm just saying that, I mean, ultimately, you don't just ask for a study just because you want to study, right? It's got a, it has another objective.
Somebody's got to pay for it, too.
Right, well, somebody's got to pay for it, but you don't just ask for that study unless you have another motive involved, right? So, let's just acknowledge this other motive and begin to figure it out.
Vice Mayor Spodowski?
Great, thank you. On the first, I attended the East Bay Community Energy Meeting where we selected a consultant to develop a local development business plan. It's one of the first business plans created for a community choice energy program prior to launch, so we're going to use that as a guiding document throughout the process. And we also posted the position to hire a CEO for the group. So, that's a major development in relieving some of Alameda County staff, hopefully of some of the burden that they've had for the last year and a half in getting this thing going. On the sixth, the LAVTA Board of Directors meeting, as Councilmember Coomer stated earlier, we did review the mid-year budget update and the patient on the autonomous vehicles. It was very interesting. We do have a grant through LAVTA to operate a few in Dublin eventually, so I would expect the entire Board of Directors would ride on the first, the inaugural ride of the autonomous vehicles, AKA Skynet, but, you know-
We're getting a deal for it already.
Yeah, so, well, there you go, movie reference, but, you know, it would be very, it's a great project and something that I'm looking forward to. So, it's connecting that last mile between homes and transit, so it's a very important connection. It's really looked at as a feeder system to our bus system and not something to support the current system. On the eighth, I attended the Altamont Regional Rail Working Group. We had a very, it was a lively discussion.
Spirited discussion?
Spirited discussion. I think we're at a point where items are moving quickly and decisions will need to be made that will affect the future service to Livermore. So, I think that it is, it's, it's at a point where we, I think we would benefit for a presentation to the council as a whole on this. There are significant decisions. We're trying to frame this, but I think we're at a crossroads right now where decisions will need to be made that will affect what happens here in Livermore in terms of BART or another service, if at all possible. So, I would like to see a presentation. I don't know the timing on it. There are developments that it might be better to wait until certain draft agreements are drafted, but I think we would benefit from a presentation at this time.
So, Honorable Mayor, members of the council, we can certainly bring back, and maybe it's a two-step process, an update sort of telling the entire council and the community sort of where we are. We likely need to get some more data and some more information, so perhaps at least we can provide an update, perhaps suggest some additional areas for study. If that's something that the council would like to have a look at, we could put that on the first meeting in April.
Yeah, because there's also some proposed changes in legislation that may be coming back.
We could bring back a report on the status of that and sort of what, where we are in that process.
We had the legislation submitted by Catherine Baker, and unfortunately, that didn't go through the last round mainly due to the designation after her name. She had a little R instead of a little D and that kind of sidetracked things, but there's proposed legislation for this round, and I'm just looking forward to having a discussion with the council as a whole, because I'm bursting at the seams right now to discuss this and to get into the nitty-gritty and to look at the options that are available to us, so. Okay, and two other items. One, several meetings back, we had representatives from the Valley Children's Museum show up during public comment. It would be nice to see if they have a presentation to the council at some point as to what they're doing. It will be a children's museum for the valley, so again, I don't know if this is on the, you know, the immediate future list, but I believe it would be nice to get a presentation for them to see exactly what they're doing, if that's something that people would agree to at some point, okay?
So, the pleasure of the council is to contact that organization and request that they make a presentation to council? Very good.
And the last item, I'd like to thank the PD. They, an event happened today in town, and they were quick to respond, and they have a potential suspect in custody, and I'd just like to thank them for their swift response.
Two of them.
Two of them, yeah.
Yeah. And just to underscore the fact that, that what makes it even trickier is that these are people that are coming into our community from, you know, 30 or 40 miles away. And the fact that you guys were able to snag them, and this is, I think, where technology is certainly going to be helping us out in the future as we can continue to leverage the technology and the financing the same to make sure that we've got the best tools to do the best job. So, thank you very much, I agree. All right?
And Honorable Mayor, I do have an item, unusually, so before, either before or after you, if you just take a call on your city manager, because I do have a brief update as well.
Okay, so I won't just sort of crash through this all. All right, so today it was the, I was also at the LPFD and JPA meeting and also at the Altamont Regional Rail Working Group meetings. But today, I was at the Altamont, excuse me, Altamont, Alameda County Transportation Commission. The first meeting was the 580 Express Lane update. Forty percent of the cars going over the Altamont are using the, oh, excuse me, forty percent of the cars that are using the express lanes come over the Altamont. So, we are capturing, we talked about having a little toll booth coming over the Altamont. Well, the express lanes are sort of the equivalent of that, because forty percent of the cars using the express lanes are from over the Altamont. Over seven million cars have used that in the year that it's been open, and that's millions of dollars of revenue that's going to stay within that transportation corridor. We also had the Planning Policy and Legislative Committee today. They were, they're talking about AB 28, which is Frazier, which is going to reenact the program that authorizes Caltrans to resume the responsibilities of administering NEPA. the responsibilities of administering NEPA, which could help us expedite some of the projects moving ahead. Also, AB-1444, Baker sponsoring that, would allow LAVTA to test the autonomous vehicles as well, so that's moving through the, the assembly right now, that's, that's looking good. The existing law authorizes Contra Costa County to have the pilot program, as you mentioned, at Bishop Ranch, and this would authorize LAVTA as well, so that's moving on ahead. But the, these are defined as autonomous vehicles that do not have a driver seated in the driver's seat, are not equipped with a steering wheel, brake pedal, accelerator specified, but being in a car without a brake pedal or an accelerator, thank goodness for technology that manages all of that. So, with that, I will refer to the, refer to the city manager.
Honorable members of the council, I did want to inform you that the city is in the process of working with Alameda County, the state of California and the federal government on recovery from significant damage from our recent rainstorms. The city had millions of dollars of damage to its public infrastructure at that time, and Alameda County, as is appropriate, declared a state of emergency, which covers all of the cities within its boundaries. This evening, I want to inform you that I will be declaring, as is consistent with the municipal code, a, a local state of emergency for the city, while essentially the county's declaration does cover us as far as starting the accounting to recover from, in particular, the federal government here, a local declaration will allow a certain leeway in actually entering into contracts. We still have debris in several of the streams that flooded with the expected storms coming on early next week. We will need to enter into contracts using an expedited process. The declaration will be issued later this week, it will remain in effect for up to seven days under my authority as the city manager. It will be brought back to you at your next meeting, you actually have a special meeting with the Planning Commission and City Council, and it will be an item on your agenda at that time. You will have two choices, either to endorse that state of emergency, and then it will essentially become permanent at that point, or to not, and at that point, it will expire. Again, the purpose of this is to allow us to do certain emergency repairs in a very timely manner. We don't want it to be raining hard again with some of that debris still in some of those large 72-inch culverts going under Collier Canyon Road and extending from some of the detention basins down into the streams lower in that area. So, as you know, we had a lot of stuff move around in those big storms, and while a lot of it has been removed, city staff does not have the equipment to be able to complete that task, so we will be calling in outside contractors to complete that task in an expedited fashion, so I wanted to make you aware of that.
A quick question. Were there any private properties that experienced damage as well?
There was significant private damage in the commercial business park out there, and we did receive information as well on that. This morning, city staff collected both information for public damage and the private damage that we were aware of for those commercial businesses out there, and shared that with county, state and federal officials. We went on a tour, that was actually coordinated countywide through our Emergency Operations Center countywide. So, again, speaking one language and actually being coordinated at the local level up through the county, through the state and the federal government is very effective. One of the other things, obviously, is this declaration will allow us to do is to make sure we're dotting our i's and crossing our t's before we spend money, because if we do want eligible for reimbursement, we not only have to follow all the proper state and federal procedures on that, we do have to make sure that our local procedures are in order as well.
So, we're making sure that, that private property owners know that they can apply for individual assistance through FEMA as well, and also HUD, I believe, is a, is a major funder of disaster.
One of the things that has to happen is we actually have to hit a certain threshold countywide with residential development in particular, and so the county is going to be doing an outreach, but if any folks in the city did experience local damage from flooding that was not covered by insurance, that letting the city know that would be very helpful, and ultimately, the county is going to make a total list of countywide damage and hoping to be able to seek a declaration for those damages as well.
Great, I just want to make sure that any private property owners know that there's help available once we declare an emergency, either through FEMA or whatever FEMA doesn't cover, then you can go through HUDDA, I believe they call it, and it, it's an amazing amount of money that comes through HUD every year. So, most people don't think HUD disaster recovery, but they do have a disaster arm, so thank you.
All right, and that's the end of my report, thank you.
Very good. All right, with that, we'll adjourn to a special workshop Wednesday, March 22nd, here in the council chambers at 5:30, and then to a regular city council meeting Monday, March 27th, right back here at 7 o'clock, meeting adjourned, thank you.